Grandpa, we come to order. Uh, I call stand to the place of the meeting. So, I pledge allegiance to the law. And we have to stay prepared. And to the republic for which it stands. My nation, under God, in the goodness of the Lord, with righteousness and justice. Thank you all for coming today. Um. As approved the agenda. Uh, Mr. Austin, your recommendation on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
Board, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
We need, we need a second.
I'll say that.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Aye, aye. Two contenders report, Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we got a few items. First of all, uh, TSI, ATSI information is in your board packet, uh, for review. Just want to make you aware of that. Uh, we're also honored to, uh, have Ms. Ann Jolly here with us today. I know she does not like that when we recognize her, but we're in the Ann Jolly boardroom today, and so we're always honored when she's in attendance. We, once again, appreciate all your service at the Center for Schools. Uh, we have got today, uh, we have got some special people with us, and we're recognizing them. Uh, they are people that we're, we've, um, had in our board meetings, working with us in a lot of different capacities, and they are retiring this year. June 30th is their last day, and so today would be their last board meeting. And so we've got four retirees that I would like for us to recognize at this time. So if I can ask our board members to, uh, meet me in front of the stage, and we'll go from there.
First up today, we have got our executive assistant, uh, to our board, Ms. Beth Ross. Congratulations. Right, next we have our chief financial officer, Ms. Stacy Graves. Congratulations.
In, in the black.
We go a long way back.
Next, we have our Title I director, Ms. Florence Hill. Congratulations.
I go a long way back with her. I was just a teenager when I started.
And our assistant superintendent of academic services, Mr. Thomas Spencer.
It's kind of had his picture, man.
I'm not gonna say the answer. I was going. I'm not gonna say it.
On behalf of the board, I do want to, uh, thank everyone, all of your hard work over these last few years, last many years, uh, as you're getting ready to retire. We also want to wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Uh, you've been, all four of y'all have been such a vital part of the success of our school district, and we just really appreciate all, all of your hard work. And I, I, board members, we're totally here that we just wish you the best of luck. Anything we can ever do to help y'all, please let us know. Let's give them all one big round.
Enjoy retirement.
All right. We good? All right, we're good, all right. That concludes my superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Mr. Keith.
Uh, yes, sir, I have, uh, one matter to be conducted in executive session. It's a personal contract matter.
Thank you. Um. Board, that's, uh, approved of minutes. Where I have a motion to approve the minutes from Unit Six, uh, board meeting. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. The agenda, agenda, A through W W W. Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, board.
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. New bids. For taste. Put one in place.
Uh, today I'm presenting the 2024-2025 district budget as presented during the June the 6th 24 budget hearing. No changes have been made to the information presented to the board and the stakeholders in the budget hearing. You all have a copy of the budget in your board package for references. Uh, the 2425 budget reflects our commitment to providing high-quality education while maintaining our financial resource responsibility. This budget is designed to support our strategic goals and ensure the sustainability of our programs and services. Again, requesting approval of the 2024-2025 district.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the 2024-25 budget.
Board, do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye.
I just want, uh, we got several members from our, uh, business department in here. Wanted to thank them again. I know we thanked y'all at the, uh, last meeting. Also want to thank, uh, Ms. Graves and Ms. Hadley, and, uh, and all of our district office team, uh, for their hard work to, uh, get the budget ready and approved. And we're very excited about the budget and the lesson school year. Want to thank them.
Next item, uh, architectural services for turf field at Center Hill.
Yes, sir, we're asking the board to enter into contract with Allen Holschel for the turf project at Center Hill High School.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Allen Holschel for the turf field at Center Hill High School.
We have a motion, board.
I make that motion.
We have a second. Second. All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Permission to advertise for bids for this turf field. Your face.
Yes, sir, we are seeking, uh, board permission to advertise for bids for this same turf project at Center Hill High School.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the turf field at Center Hill High School.
Board, do we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Architectural services for turf field at Lake Cromer High School.
Yes, sir, we're, um, asking the board to enter into contract again with Allen Holschel for the turf project at Lake Cromer High School.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend to the board to approve entering into contractual agreement with Allen Holschel for the turf field at Lake Cromer High School.
Board, do we have a motion? I make the motion. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Ms. Riley. Okay, permission to advertise for bids for turf field at Lake Cromer.
Yes, sir, once again, we're seeking board permission to advertise, uh, for bids for the turf project at Lake Cromer High School.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve advertising bids for the turf field at Lake Cromer High School.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And this completes the, all in favor, aye. We got it, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I would like to point out, too, uh, these turf, turf fields will be ready, uh, for the football season for 2025 season, and this will complete the project for all eight of our schools, all eight of our high schools will have turf field at that time. So this is the last set of approvals for that. We're excited about that thing. I appreciate y'all's support of that.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Chase, bids for Apple brand specifics.
Yes, sir, bids were open on June the 7th for the purchase of brand-specific educational Apple products for the DeSoto County School District. Due to the fact that Apple Inc. is the only vendor DCS is legally allowed to purchase Apple brands from, it is my recommendation that we accept the bid from Apple.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve accepting the bid from Apple Inc. for the Apple brand specific.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Uh, Mr. Chase, uh, bids for charging towers.
Yes, sir, reverse auction was conducted May the 31st for charging towers for the district. It is my recommendation that we accept the lowest and best bid from CDWG.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve best bid from CDWJ for, uh, charging towers.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Bids for interactive panels, Mr. Chase.
Yes, sir, reverse auction was conducted also on May the 31st for interactive panels, both cart-mounted and wall-mounted for the district. It is my recommendation that we accept the lowest and best bid from Academic Technologies, who had the lowest bid on both ways.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve, uh, the lowest and best bid from Academic Technologies for the interactive panels for the 2425 school year.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Bids for interactive projector, Mr. Chase.
Yes, sir, reverse auction was conducted on June the 3rd for interactive projectors for the district. It is my recommendation to accept the lowest and best bid from Academic Technologies.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the bids for the interactive projectors for the 2425 school year.
Board, we need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Request for proposal for educational consulting services, Mr. Chase.
Yes, sir, responses for proposals were opened on June the 10th for educational consulting services for the 2425 school year for the district. The district require comprehensive education consulting for grades one through 12, and for identified subgroups for kindergarten. The tabulation totals are in your board packet. Based on the scoring criteria, that is my recommendation to enter into contract with Kids First.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into contract with Kids First due to the request for proposals for educational consulting services for the 2425 school year.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Ms. Graves. Statement of revenue, Ms. Graves.
Uh-huh. Our revenue collections through April for general funds are at 312,486,747, and that continues to run like 6% higher than FY '23 revenues, which were at 295,106,825. The increase, once again, is, uh, an increase in the value of the ABORAM and increased MAP. And our revenues for all funds are at 360,116,734, which is about 3% over FY '23. And the reason that it's only about 3% for that is we have way less federal funds this year than we did, um, in last year with SRR. General fund expenditures through April are at 240,713,013, and that continues to trend about 6%, 6% higher than FY '23 expenditures. Last year at this point, we were at 226,089,051. Expenditures for all funds are at 352,238,806, and that does include construction. And the increase is in line with our budget, and we're trending about 3% lower than budget projections.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the state revenue expenditures for April 2024.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Ms. Graves, combined balance sheet for April.
Our favorite report. Uh, the fund balance for all general funds is at 202,84320. We're up 7% over FY '23, which we were at 191,56423. Um, there're gonna be two things this time that make the fund balance. If you look at last month's report versus this month's, we're already dealing with the $10 million transfer for, uh, for our Missland construction, but to complete the, uh, Hernando High School and for the other, um, additions that we're doing for next year, we, it was already in the budget, we transferred 20 million. So it's gonna make it look a lot less than it, than it, you know, really would be. So, um, so we're dealing with that. So the increase over FY '23 would have been 17% had we not transferred, but we did that have in, did have that in the budget, and it's now time for us to transfer that numbers.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet for April 2024.
We need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye.
The April cash balance for district maintenance is at 188,329,546. That's about 67% of the total cash balance for all funds, which is at 282,652,650. And the amount that we have invested with Smith Sheldon and Regions Bank is at 50,853,993, and that has been, that's come back very strong, um, as of late, so we're proud of that.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the state of cash flow for April 2024.
Need a motion.
I make that motion.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Resolution of intent to issue limited tax note.
Um, about a year, about May of 2023, the board had authorized 14 million limited tax notes, which we're just doing over several series as our three mill note, um, revenues come in. So last year we did a, a 4.1 million dollar short-term note. We're gonna do another 1.4 million dollar short-term note, and this will go toward, uh, the Hernando High School as well. Um, and then later on the year, we'll issue the remainder, Stacey Hammond, we'll be up here issuing the remainder of the 14 million.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve resolution intent to issue limited tax things.
Need a motion, board?
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Ms. Graves, our private placement agreement.
Oh, were those all my private placement?
There were two items.
The Shelby County?
The, um...
Oh, I'm so sorry. All right, so, great, I literally did better. So is that the Greg McMurray G17? So that, the, um, form for that is, uh, for y'all to approve. We do need an underwriter for this issue. It is gonna be a private placement, but we would request that a crew and associate, um, handle the private placement, this is the, uh, 1.4 million dollars.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the private placement agreement.
Ms. Haseman.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I thought there was one more, then. Resolution for... No, is that it? Okay.
Need a vote? We didn't get a vote. Got a motion, that need a second.
Ms. Weaver, a second.
All in favor, aye. Aye.
Very good.
All in favor, aye. Aye.
One question for you, please.
I was waiting on that.
One more time.
New board policy, JQO.
Um, yes, sir, this is a new required policy by the Mississippi Department of Education. We are presenting this as a first read. Uh, it will be available for public comments, so no action is needed at this time.
Thank you. New board policy, Ms. Haseman, EBBAG.
Yes, this is a new policy that is required under Senate Bill 2349. It was presented as a first read on June 6th. There were no public comments, therefore we're asking that you adopt this policy as written.
We need your recommendation, Mr. Austin.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the new board policy, EBBAG cardiac emergency response plan.
We need a motion, board?
I make that motion.
We need a second. Need a second.
Ms. Weaver, second, yes.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Revised board policy, AEAB, Ms. Haseman.
With the signing of House Bill 4130, the Mississippi Adequate Education Program Funding Formula is being replaced by the Mississippi Student Funding Formula. So most of these revisions that we're about to do is gonna be language reflected with that change. So for AEAB, we are asking to update language within the policy to reflect House Bill 4130.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve revised board policy, AEAB for holidays.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Another revised policy, AFC.
Yes, sir, we're asking to update language within the policy to reflect House Bill 4130.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy, AFC for emergency closings.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Revised board policy, CEE.
Yes, we're asking to update language within the policy to reflect House Bill 4130.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy, CEE for superintendent compensation benefits.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Revised board policy, DCH.
We're asking to update language to reflect House Bill 4130.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve revised board policy, DCH for periodic budget reconciliation.
Board, we need a motion. We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Ms. Haseman, revised board policy, DG.
Uh, we're asking to update language to reflect House Bill 4130.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve revised board policy, DG Depository Funds.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Revised, revised board policy, DJ.
We're asking to update language to reflect House Bill 4130.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve revised board policy, DJ for insurance funds.
Board, we need a motion. We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Revised board policy, EG.
We're asking to update language to reflect House Bill 4130.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve revised board policy, EG for insurance management.
Board, we need a motion.
Make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Revised board policy, GBRI.
Um, yes, sir, we're asking to revise this policy to allow for classified employees who hold a certified state agency license, uh, to receive V days per simply.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy, GBRI absence from you.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
Hold this one.
We're gonna, we'll take motion from Michelle then, Lee.
Okay. So, need a second.
Yeah.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye. Uh, revised board policy, JGF.
We're asking to update language to reflect House Bill 4130.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve revised board policy, JGF for student safety.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Haseman, personnel.
Yes, sir. Agents 1 through 6 for recommendations, page 7 through 12 for personnel changes. Page 13 is memo for myself, the request to add one additional secondary assistant principal for the 25, 24, 25 school year. Page 14 is for myself also, to reclassify one assistant internal audit manager to internal audit manager, uh, for the 24, 25 school year. Uh, this will be paid per the financial manager two salary, and it will be a 230-day, um, contract. Page 15 is memo for myself to eliminate one teaching unit from our branch middle school the 24, 25 school year. Page 16 is memo for myself to reclassify three 187-day clerical positions to 200-day data clerks for the So Central Primary, Horn Lake Intermediate, and South Haven Intermediate. Page 17 is a memo from Ms. Williams, our director of middle school. Mill Health, requesting an employee, this retired counselor, be allowed to work each fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th as needed on a part-time basis at her hourly rate of pay. Page 18 is a memo for myself, in a quest to add one plus technician position for the transportation department, and then will be paid for the best plus tech scale. Page 19 through 22 is a memo, a job description for myself, in a quest to add one bilingual parent liaison for this upcoming school year. Be employed 210 days and be paid for the bilingual liaison scale. Pages 23 through 26 is a, is a memo, a job description for myself to have one part-time E L family and parent liaison. They'll work no more than 19 and a half hours per week, day hourly for the next school year. Page 27 through 30 is a memo, a job description for myself, to reclassify four ADA clerk positions to 200-day records clerk, and those will be at Horn Lake Middle, South Haven Middle, the South Central Middle, and Career Tech Center East and West. Pages 31 through 33 is a memo, a job description for Ms. Goss, or special education director, for a quest to add five new 504 implementation assistants or direct provisions of accommodations to the students who have 504 rulings. These clerks will work with the 504 coordinator and the 504 data clerks, and they'll be paid per the teacher assistant pay scale. Page 34 is for Ms. Goss also, in his request to change the funding for the district's part-time M T S S intervention specialist from ESRA funds to I D E A funds for intervention students prior to referral for special education. Page 35 is for Ms. Goss also, in his request to add one psychologist, psychometrist to assist with preschool assessments along with other students needing assessments for special education, and this will be paid through I D E A funds. Page 36 is Ms. Goss, request to add one additional positive behavioral specialist to assist with behavioral intervention, mostly to work with staff and students in self-contained classrooms, and it'd be paid with I D E A funds. Page 37 is a memo from Mr. Deacon, Spickie, their director of athletics, someone who will work with our professional with cheerleading at Central High School next year. Page 38, a memo from Ms. Russell, the director of intervention, requesting to pay a stipend in the amount of $1,500 annually to all K through 12 librarians. This would be the role they'll play in textbook inventory and technology duties. They've been added. Page 39 is licensed employee list, a classified employee list for the 24, 25 school year. Age 40 is a coworker, pay scale for the next school year. Age 41 is a registered dietitian, pay scale for the next school year. Age 42 is bilingual translator and parent liaison, pay scale for next school year. Age 43 is a request additional pay for Ms. Tredway, our director of middle school, on an employee who will work the early childhood boot count from 715 to 725, and this person, assistant, will be paid at the hourly rate. Age 44 is a quest additional pay for Ms. Tredway on teachers who will work early childhood boot count, 715 to 725, at $100 per day. Page 45 through 47 is a quest additional pay for Ms. Tredway on pre-K teacher assistants to attend a virtual platform on 715 through 725 at their hourly rate of pay. Page 48 is a quest additional pay for Ms. Green, our instance director, in a quest for an employee to work filling in for current instance clerk on attorney leave at South Haven Middle School. This would be from 16 to 726 at their hourly rate of pay. Page 49 is a quest for additional pay for Mr. White, our paint maintenance director, an employee who will be replacing the previously worked with employee at the athletic fields at Horn Lake Middle School, June and July, $500 per month, and adding the stop. At this time, I have that.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel address.
Board, we need a motion.
I make that motion.
All in favor, aye.
Need a second.
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 Got it. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Page 50 approved, which is a recommendation for a teacher at Lewisburg Middle School, that kind of school.
Mr. Austin, your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
Board, we need a motion. Need a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, ayes have it. All right. We need, let's see. Mr. Colber?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one residency appeal to discuss in executive session.
Thank you. I need a motion for consideration of closed session to determine whether the board should enter in the executive session for the following matters: residency appeal and a contract matter. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Let's see. Thanks to come back and let you know if we stay in the executive session.